Kus?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Harris?
Go ahead.
Isom?
Here.
Kuiper?
Here.
Seaverton?
Here.
Singy?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Brings us down to communications. We have a substitute item for item 785. Financial and survey information. And a medical leave from the manager will be gone for a little bit. That brings us down to persons to be heard. Linda, you want to start us off?
Thank you. My name is Linda Auger, and I reside at 841 Forest Avenue. And tonight, I am here to encourage you to support the community agency funding request of the Small Business Development Center at last year's amount, which was $25,000. I believe that the center brings valuable resources to existing businesses and budding entrepreneurs in our community. And I think it would be very sad if the center were not to be staffed. Later on, on comments, Kimberly Hayward from Anchorage SBDC will be speaking to you. And I spoke a little bit with her before the meeting, and there is a chance that she may be willing to relocate to Ketchikan. And if that can at all happen, our business community will be... She's a dynamic person. If you have a chance and you're interested in her bio, you can read that on the website, aka sbdc.org. And it's under our staff. She has a very impressive resume. The fact that she wants to move here, to me, is so exciting. She'll be an asset to our business community, but better than that, she'll be a great asset for our whole community. Again, I thank you for your past support, and I encourage you to continue the funding at $25,000 for the Alaska Small Business Development Center. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Bill?
Ms. Mayor, council members, I'm Bill Auger. I also live at 841 Forest Avenue. And, yep, we live together. And I'm also Alaska's alternate commissioner of the Pacific Salmon Commission and a board member of the Pacific Salmon Treaty Coalition. And you have Resolutions 2617 in front of you tonight. We would like you to support that resolution. We're in the middle of starting our negotiations within the Pacific Salmon Treaty. And for Alaska, that means that there's three chapters that are for renegotiation. Chapter one is the transboundary rivers, which is the Taku, the Stikine, and the Owisack Rivers. And then chapter two is the boundary area, which is our three-point noise island fishery. And then chapter three is the one that's always the most contentious, which is Coast White Chinook. And the treaty coalition was formed way back in the early 90s when we were in the middle of the real fish wars, you know, the days when our ferry was blockaded in Prince River. Folks should still remember those days. Well, we did such a great job in 1999, and we thought, gee, we don't need them again because, you know, who would want to change what happened in 99? Well, and 2009 came along, and there we were renegotiating, and lo and behold, they wanted another piece of the pie, and we were the trading stock. You know, nobody wanted to come after Alaska until Washington State wanted to come after Canada, and then Canada pointed to the north and said, "We need a piece of you, too." So there we were, and we hadn't done the late work as far as making ourselves politically active. So we reorganized, we made ourselves politically active so that when the commissioner from Washington says, "I talked to my governor last night, and he said we're not to give one more thing," we can say, "Well, we talked to our governor and our senators," and they said the same thing. So this is kind of where we're at. I mean, the treaty is really unique in the United States because it's the only treaty where the federal government doesn't have a vote. The stakeholders and the states are the ones that actually renegotiate the treaty. The federal government is there, and they always have the heavy hand of lawsuits and the Endangered Species Act, and those are the ones that they always use against us. But if we could get the community to support our efforts to try to not give one more fish, that's what we're asking for every night.
Thanks, Bill. Sounds good. Oh, we got a question from Bob.
Is the Eunuch River in the transboundary?
No, it is not.
Discussion?
The transboundaries are, because you're talking about mining issues...
Yeah, but it's also... They do fish counts, and it's a spawning river.
Yeah, but there are no direct harvests on those fish, like from... On the Canadian side, there are no fisheries. On the US side, there isn't a direct fishery. It's an indirect just because of its quarter fisheries.
Okay. Thank you.
No. They have tried... We have had lots of people try to bring habitat into the discussions. And it's thwarted by not only Canada, but also the state of Washington, state of Oregon, and federal government.
Thanks, Bill. Deborah? There are you. There you are.
I'm Deborah Mylum. I live at 260 Higginsburg, and I'm with Alaska Legal Services at 306 Main Street. And we're going to move to the Plaza. And I just wanted to thank the committee members for their support in figuring out who's going to get what of the money that was available, and the council, and the city, and the mayor for always giving all of the nonprofits money, whatever you have to work with. And I'll be here to answer questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt?
Matt Tibbles, 3302 Hawkins Avenue, number four. I'm here representing WISH. I'm the education services manager of WISH. And if you see the flyers and the agenda or the schedule for the Thrive Summit, I want to give you a personal invitation to come to that and be a part of a community conversation about how trauma and adverse childhood experiences impacts our community, both on a health standpoint for individuals of youth and adults, but also from a standpoint of economics. Because there's pretty good statistical information that says the more aces our employees have, the higher likelihood they are to be absent from work. I think the number is twice a month per employee if you have even just one ace, ace score. So we want to invite all of you to be a part of this conversation. As you see on the back of the schedule, there is, when we get into the community conversation, there's a place for governing bodies. And I'd really like for you guys to be there, to participate in the conversation so that we are working toward a healthier, not only just a physically healthier community, but we're working toward a healthier economic community along the way. As you can see, those that are sponsoring at our WISH, the Alaska Children's Trust, the Ketchikan Indian Community, Peace Health, Vigor, KWC, and the AUIC, which is Early Learning, which is an early learning organization, and also the school board, or the school district, not school board. The school district is a part of this, too. So there's a wide range of organizations in different sectors in this community that are interested in this conversation and see the importance of what it means to our community.
Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you.
Kimberly Hayward?
Hi, I'm... Can you hear me?
You can't hear.
Sorry. I'm Kimberly... Can't talk Hayward, apparently. And I am... I'm sorry.
Take your time.
There we go. Okay. I'm Kimberly Hayward, and I'm here at the Small Business Development Center. I'm down from Anchorage. And I think you'll remember a few weeks ago, our executive state director, Isaac Vanderberg, was here, and he kind of told you a little bit about what we do. We offer free business advising services to both new and existing businesses, businesses trying to sell, exiting, et cetera. And I wanted to come and just thank you all so much for the grant support that you've given us. I recognize that it's been cut, and we're just really grateful to be able to continue and to continue to have that support, that support, hopefully looking for more again in the future after this next year. And that's what I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, is just really the fun, you know, what the funds will be used for in moving forward, and some of the things that we're looking at bringing into the community. Currently, our advising covers, you know, the financials, starting up a new business, creating projections, teaching people how to manage their business. One of the things that we did in the center this year that allowed us to have our most successful year in 29 years was we added a lot of marketing offerings, including a marketing intensive. And so we're bringing those kind of services and those kind of talents into the area, the marketing intensive. We're looking at bringing in website development classes for business owners who can't, who don't have the funds to pay somebody to do it, but really need websites. They all need websites, and especially how do you connect and stay in connection with our tourists coming in in a way of commerce after they leave the city? So these are all the different kind of things that we're looking at bringing into the area and the services that we're augmenting with. We've also talked to you, Isaac talked about doing some deep dive on specific industries, such as the shipyards and bringing some of the support services in the shipyards from Seattle up here, healthcare, those kind of things. And then finally, when we look at probably the reason that the funding was cut, we're looking at what did, you know, what didn't we do right that we could have done better and as a postmortem? And so the center itself is really committed into bringing somebody in here who has been fully trained in the SBDC culture before coming into this community or any of our satellite communities. I cannot fathom trying to do that. That would have been a really, really hard task to do. And so it's not about me, Linda mentioned quite graciously, thank you, that they're looking at sending me down, and I'm looking at bringing my family down here, and I'm really excited to do that. But it's less about me and more about the center's commitment to bringing in, you know, the resources that have sort of, you know, been burned through the fire up there and know, and have learned. And so that's some of the, you know, just some of the postmortem kind of things that we're looking at doing a little bit differently, and some of the services we're bringing. So in short, just thank you so much for the opportunity and, you know, the grant funding, the continuing grant funding. Yeah, any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Oh, Dave, go ahead.
So what is the current process? If someone, if the local business wants to be involved with SBDC, what do they do?
That is a wonderful question. And what they do is they contact our office, and they let us know... There's a one-sheet questionnaire, right, that they fill out, and it just basically is, "What is your business and what are your needs?" So that we know how to help you when you walk in the door. In other words, so it can be mostly productive, most productive. There's also, they sign up online. And if it's a new business, we have an on-demand class that we've just redone. That, it's about a 30-minute class, that they take that on-demand class if they're new. If they're not new, they don't have to do that at all. And that's it. There's, you have to make, what is it? You have to be qualified as a small business under 500 employees and $23 million or something silly. Yeah, so, yeah, exactly. So it's a very doable thing.
When you say contact the office in Anchorage?
Right now, it's in Anchorage, right? And actually, right now, we just, since we're not staffed down here, we're serving, we're continuing to serve you from our Juneau office. Or if it's marketing intensive, then I'll work with the people through our Anchorage, either Skype or whatnot. So, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, any other questions?
Yeah. When you said, "If you're new," is that a new business or new to the organization?
New business. Yeah.
So are the on-demand, is that a class that you take online, or is that an...
Yes.
And then, so then all the other classes are either in Anchorage?
You know, right now, they are. One of, we'll definitely change that when we bring somebody down here, is to offer in-person classes as well as the online classes.
Judy?
I just... You keep saying, "When we come down here," but we're looking at, as you know, we took, we took the money down from $25,000 to $8,000, the committee did, because we didn't hear that anything was going to go on in Ketchikan. So are you looking at doing that this year, in 2016?
We are. We're looking, if it's, if it's me, I'll be down in May, as soon as my child is out of school. If it's not me, then we're looking at staffing it as soon as we could, or whatever works for that person. But, yeah.
Judy?
And when you say you're serving us from Juneau, and I understand there's a lot of confidentiality involved here, but what are the numbers? How many people in Ketchikan are you serving, exactly?
You know what? I don't know that number, and I probably should have before coming in here, and I don't. I'm sorry.
Anybody else? Dick?
I'm going to bounce back, but does Linda know that number? Don't remember it? Okay.
Caught me off guard.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, and thanks for the funding.
I hate to say this, he came back. Kevin, come on up.
I love you, too, Mayor Williams.
You know, if you're going to come to every meeting, we're going to have to rethink this, this relationship, Mr. Gadsby.
Hi, good evening. I'm Diane Givitayo, 2735 Fifth Avenue, and I'm the treasurer of the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition Governing Board, and it is my distinct honor and pleasure to formally introduce our new executive director, Kevin Gadsby.
Mayor Williams.
Looks like you never laugh.
I don't think you do.
But it's good to visit with you all again. For the record, my name is Kevin Gadsby, and I'm speaking tonight as the new Ketchikan Wellness Coalition Executive Director, located at, and the KWC is located at 716 Totem Way, Suite 200. A lot of people have asked me why I came back to Ketchikan, mainly because it took me going around the world to realize that this is home.
Right on, Jeff.
But during the past few years, I've thought a lot about place and opportunity. For every opportunity you have, a person has that invigorates their soul, another person may experience the opposite. They may wind up being that person who misses that chance and then feels trapped in their community. They may be that older individual whose all their kids have moved south and feels trapped and because they can't financially move. It may be a child or young person who feels like they can't fit in the mold of a small town. And that brought me to thinking about a young person who I mentored a few years ago. I got to spend a few minutes with her over the weekend. And she asked me what we were doing with the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition, and talked about us bringing groups of people together to be able to affect change. And to make Ketchikan even more positive place to live and healthy. And she, classic teenager mode, she laughed hard, caustically, and long, noting that will never happen, before her listing off her own long list of bills. My heart broke, but I began to try to search for things that were positive in my normal style. You know me, I always try to look for the positive in things. And I thought about the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition's recent behavioral health survey, which we haven't even released to the public yet, so y'all are getting a preview here. Found that a third of respondents had mental or emotional difficulty multiple times per week. And almost half of the respondents here in Ketchikan, this is Ketchikan-centric, had sought counseling at some point in their life. So there'll be more information shared about that later. I also asked her about the new BU Positive Norms Campaign, which you may have seen, that was coordinated through the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition but partnered with the school district in KPU and the Alaska Wellness Coalition. And it shared with young people that 78% of young people do not drink. And that, she had seen it, but we were still arguing about whether that was actually going to create change in the community. We believe it will. And we are, we're hearing from families and people, and young people, that it's changing their viewpoints. We're also going to be sponsoring Terrence, behind me, Terrence Robbins is going to be working on putting together some town hall meetings later this spring on drug, basically marijuana and alcohol abuse among young people, to talk about those issues. And we also, with our task force, with the promoting respectful relationships, is coordinating a 1 billion rising event that will be February 13th. It's a worldwide call to end abuse against women because one out of three do experience abuse at some point in their life. And that is something I'm going to be there for, and I hope you all will be, too, for my young friend, and I'm hoping she'll come with me. Finally, just want to say as closing that I hope that the Wellness Coalition is going to be able to grow, and we're going to invite pop promoters and tea toddlers to work together so that we can have a healthier community. I also want to say that a board member who actually called me to schedule the interview for the position said that she wanted KWC to be the heart of the community. I want to take a step back from that because we, that job's already taken. That's the nonprofit leaders, some of whom have spoken to you today. That's the nonprofit workers who often work longer hours and for less pay than their for-profit counterparts. And they're teaching drama to financially poor kids or providing legal services to a young mother. I've been there. I know. And I also know we need to do both. We need to do systems change at the 20,000-foot level, and we also need to do, help individuals who are falling between the cracks now. And I went to Ireland to try to help us be able to figure out how to bring everybody together to address these changes for a better, for a better Ketchikan. I ask you to support the heart of Ketchikan tonight, and that's not KWC alone. That's all the nonprofits that are requesting support from the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Good to have you back. All right. That brings us to anybody else wanting to speak to the council that was not on the list tonight? See you, Dunn. We'll move into...
Terrence.
Terrence, where are you standing?
Oh, go ahead, Terrence, sorry.
I'll be, I'll be very brief. Terrence Robbins, Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. I see that you have some marijuana, marijuana ordinance on their agenda tonight. And I'm not speaking to that specifically, but in general, I'd just like you to always remember when you're, when you're working on ordinances like this, that youth, youth of these substances increase when they see it normalized. If they see it in our community, if they see our adults using it, if they see us legalizing it, stores popping up, their perception of harm decreases, and their perception of parent and parent disapproval if they use also decreases. The DFC grant has four, that funds my position, has four things that they care about, and that's youth perception of the harms of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs. And that's what we're measuring. That's what we're trying to change. So I encourage any efforts by the city council to regulate commercial marijuana, and to remember that just because marijuana is less harmful than alcohol, doesn't mean that it's harmless. So, all right, thank you, guys.
Thanks a lot. Terrence? All right, that brings us down to consent agenda. I was thinking we should add 6B1, 7A4, and 7A... I mean, yeah, 7A7. Does anybody have any objection on those?
Mr. 6B1?
7A7.
7A4, 7A7. If there's none, we'll add those to it, and do we have a motion to consent?
Sure. Second.
Move it in second, and Madam Plut, can you read items?
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of January 21st, 2016. Resolution number 162615, alternative allocation method for the FY16 Shared Fisheries Business Tax Program, exempting the procurement of ProCom Alaska LLC Annual Maintenance Agreement from competitive bidding and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, exempting the procurement of annual maintenance services for the library department's First City Libraries Collection Management System from competitive bidding and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's with Cersei Dynix. Liquor license renewals for the Eagle's Nest, American Legion, the VFW, the Totem Bar, the Red Snapper, my office, Fat Stan's Lounge, the Pizza Mill, the Galley, Stone Deck Pizza, Totem, Totem Bar, Newtown Liquor, City Lighthouse Liquor Store, and Lines International. Decrellation of Public Emergency for the installation of a pitched roof over Electric Division Headquarters, and that's with Eden Builders. Ordinance number 161810, participation in an agreement for the purchase of television programming services, and that's in second meeting. The award of contract number 1609, the Centennial Building Electrical Upgrades with Island Electric. And resolution number 162617, supporting the Alaska Department of Fish and Game and the Fisheries Representatives to provide representation on the US and Canada Salmon Commission, and that was put on the agenda by our very own Mayor Williams.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody, on any of the items? Call the roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Singy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Kuiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. That brings us down to new business 7K1, ordinance 161811, increasing dock charges for port use first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council approved first reading ordinance number 161811, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section 13.08.100, to increase dock charges for port use and providing for an effective date.
Move it in second. Have anything to add, Bob?
No, just the fact that this are, these are vessels that are under like 120 feet that are at the port, probably have room for them in the harbors, and it's something that we haven't done for 12 years.
Yes. Anybody else? Call the roll.
Kuiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Singy?
Yes.
Then that passes seven, nothing. That brings us down to 782, ordinance 161807, increasing wastewater rates, first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council approved first reading ordinance number 16-1807, increasing wastewater rates, establishing a date for a public hearing, and providing for an effective date.
Second. Move it in second. Anybody got anything to add? Changes it from 46 to 49. Dick?
I'm just going to make a comment. We've got a number of rate increases in front of us tonight. I don't know how many people know what that adds up to to the monthly bill, but it's well over 20 bucks. I admit, things are in the hole, and we need to deal with some shortages, but I think it behoves us to make sure we're watching what we're spending, and that includes labor costs. And the public's got to stay on our rear end so we don't spend it. Otherwise, you pay it. It's your cost. And so I'm just, I'm just going to leave it at that, but that's equivalent to what? One latte, they call it a week, if you drink lattes, but some people can't afford it. So I, I mean, I'm going to go along with these tonight, but I'm thinking way ahead. Come fall, when we start doing the budget again, something's got to give, and it's not going to give this direction. Anyway, that's the end of my comment.
Call the roll.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Singy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven, nothing, brings us down to 7A3, ordinance 161809, increase rates and fees for solid waste collection disposal, first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council approved first reading ordinance number 16-1809, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section 17.16.060 and 17.16.070, to increase rates and fees for solid waste collection and disposal, and adding a new section, 7.16.075, entitled "Use the City Trash Compactor and Providing an Effective Date."
Do we have a second? Move it in second. Bob?
No, I think everybody understands that our solid waste contract changed, we have added extra costs in regards to that, and there's an adjustment in all those fees since it's a rate-structured process, so...
We had a good... Anybody else?
Well, I think we still have a good deal. It's just that it's different.
I understand. Call the roll.
Singy?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Kuiper?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
That passes seven, nothing, brings us down to 785, ordinance 161812, amending chapter 5.20 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, currently entitled Alcohol Beverage, and setting forth certain definitions and regulations, and marijuana establishment licenses, first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council approved first reading, ordinance number 161812, amending chapter 5.20 of the Ketchikan...
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Severson?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven nothing. Brings us down to 7A5, ordinance 161812, amending chapter 5.20 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, currently entitled Alcohol Beverage, and setting forth certain definitions and regulations in marijuana establishment licenses, first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council approved first reading ordinance number 161812, amending chapter 5.20 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, currently entitled Alcoholic Beverages, to change that title to Regulation of Alcoholic Beverages and Marijuana, and setting forth certain definitions and regulations regarding hours of operation, inspection of premises, and council review of alcohol and marijuana establishment licenses, and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Moved in second. Dave?
Nothing more to add, Ed.
Anybody else? Dick?
Yeah, I guess that I don't know what this can do for us, and I know people will argue about alcohol and smoking, but I think the hours are way too long. I think we ought to shut this thing down at eight o'clock at night, eight a.m.
If you had your way, we'd shut it down at noon. What are you talking about?
We'll let it go to nine o'clock, and that way everybody gets away from her store before they get there. But, you know, it's going to happen, it's going to happen like Lou said the other night, probably within a year, something's going to happen. But I think we can manage it, and I think the hours are way too long. And I'll let you think about it, but next meeting I may move to amend this.
Okay. Anybody else? Call the roll.
Gage?
Okay, oh, excuse me. Sorry.
Harris?
Sometimes the names get...
Is that me?
Yes.
That's a yes.
Maybe my hearing needs to turn up a little.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
What are we voting on?
Yes. Kuz?
Is that me now?
That's you.
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven nothing. That brings us down to 76, 2016 Community Agency Funding Recommendations, Community Agency Grant Committee. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council director, city manager, to enter into 2016 community agency funding agreements with those organizations and for those dollar amounts as recommended by the community grant committee, and authorize a total expenditure of $360,400 from the 2016 community grant program account number 610.02.
Do we have a second? Moved in second. Judy?
Your Honor, I'm not exactly sure how to go about doing this, but it's come to my attention that one of the agencies for this grant committee is not in good standing with their state funding agency, and that they're in fact on probation. And I'm not comfortable approving funds for them at this time. I think I'd like more information, and that's Wish, and I think I'd like them to come back and explain why they're on probation, but, you know, I'll do what the rest of you.
There you make...
So you're making amendment?
Pardon me?
Excuse me.
I'd like to make an amendment, yes.
To what?
To the main motion and hold out $16,500, and they have an opportunity to come before us and explain why they're on probation, or, I mean, it's a valuable...
Do we have a second? Second. Okay. All right, anybody else? Dick?
Are you going to vote on the amendment?
Well, if the amendment passes, I'm going to consider it the main motion.
Okay, I want to make another amendment, so.
Okay, well, we won't do that then. We'll approve this amendment and go to yours, if they approve it.
Could we maybe ask the Wish people here?
Are there Wish people here?
Yeah, Matt's here, and I don't know if it's his place, but.
Where is that? Is Matt still here? I can't see you through the thing.
Because I...
Can you address Judy's concerns?
I honestly don't think I have the authority to do that. It would have to be our executive director to do that.
We'll just move it till the next meeting if it goes this way, so. All right, let's vote on this amendment, deplore Wish until next meeting. Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Kifer?
No.
Okay, that passes five to two. Dick, did you have another amendment?
Yeah, I'm concerned that we cut the SBA quite a bit, and I know except for two people sitting here, Julie and General Lee, we have probably gotten monthly meeting, monthly updates from Linda, and they've been positive, because she's worked with the education that she's done to them out there at the White Cliff Building, and I've been in and out of there, and I've seen what she's created in the couple of years that she was there. Unfortunately, we lost her because of personal things, and they haven't replaced her, so I think it's done good for the small business, so I guess it bothers me that it looks like what we did is we...and let me stop again. The guys that worked on this committee, you did a good job, so don't get me wrong. I've been there and I've done that, so it's tough. And I also know the small business didn't get to show up because there was nobody here, but it looks like what we did was maybe take a little away from them for whatever reason, and it got redistributed on the... to about $8,000, and put small business back up to 16, which is still $6,000 less than we gave them last year. And so I would so move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We got a second? Dick, did you have anything else?
Well, I probably didn't talk before I made motion.
Bob?
I agree. I think the small business does some good here, but the fact that we don't have a man in office at this particular point, and it sounds like we may not have one for a little while, I guess I'm not looking to expend funds to provide services in June or April.
Oh, Dave in the general...
Yeah, I don't want to speak for the members of the committee, but I think that was the root of the issue. We didn't, it appeared, and certainly we, no one told us that there was a chance they were going to re, you know, have somebody down here, so it sounded as like we were basically sending $25,000 north for whatever reason. And I think probably that was the concern we had, was that why are we spending $25,000? We have groups here that need money, and frankly, the total we had to spend this year was $5,000 less than last year, so we were looking at cuts for some. We didn't want, we certainly didn't want to cut any local groups. Now, obviously, if they're seriously serious about having someone come down here, that's a different situation. But we were kind of faced with, well, we're spending $25,000 and it's going north, and maybe they'll have some teleconferences, maybe, we didn't get a real good sense of what was going to be provided. That was my opinion.
General Lee, then Judy.
I'm just going to repeat what Dave said, plus the fact that, in a way, I think we just put a little fire under, and maybe we'll get someone down here, but I don't see the need to send money north when we have so many groups of people working on bare minimums to run their organizations and doing really good work here. I mean, I'd like to see more from it, but I don't see anything, so.
Judy?
I agree with both Dave and General Lee. I think that $8,000, yes, it's less than what they asked for, it's still a little bit, and I'm sure, having worked on that committee, I know that if the committee sees something coming from the small business development, they'll consider giving them more money, but I think that they're fine where they're at right now.
Dick?
Got their question, and Carl, you may be able to answer this. We don't give them the money if they're living out of town, do they? Is that, I was, I was under the impression the money only went to them if it was opening this off, keeping this office open.
That's not correct. I mean, in general, community agencies, there are portions of that funding that will go out of the community.
Well, in the case of some of them, because we know where they're going, the SBA, I thought our agreement was that that's just for an office in town.
I can't speak to that. I don't know if any of the money is diverted north or not.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Who we got?
Can one of the two ladies talk to us?
Oh, come on.
Where did the money go?
Come on up.
Can you tell them what this whole thing is?
You bet. All right.
I can tell you that all of the money that is given to the Ketchikan SBDC stays in the community of Ketchikan, so it directly benefits this community, actually the city of Ketchikan.
But how if there's no one here manning the office?
Now, that's a question I can't answer, but in the past...
No, exactly, and this...
And that really is a good question for Isaac.
Yeah, yeah.
But in the past, he's stayed here.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and when you were running the office, I had no problem supporting the organization. I think when you stopped running the office, I think that's when we started saying, okay, what's the money going to? So that...
Right, right. And if I could add one more thing, before I left, Kimberly and I were working on having her come down here and give some workshops. So if in fact the discussion came about that you decided to fund more money, I believe that you would see it directly here at the Ketchikan Center. So, thank you for letting me.
Thank you. One thing, too, and it may be irrelevant at this point, is we found out today that we could have been invited to the committee meeting that was doing the grant funding, but we didn't know that. And had we known that, unequivocally, somebody would have been at that meeting, but it was sort of after the fact, so.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Yeah, thank you.
Any last comments?
I just...
Julie?
I was on the grants committee, and we based our decision on the greatest need, and there were a lot of people here with a lot of needs, but I think to show that we are supportive of the program, the 8,000 is sufficient. I seconded Dick's motion, but I will vote no on it. But to show that we're supportive of the program, I thought that eight was sufficient.
Dick?
Yeah, just one last comment. I don't remember exactly when and why we took this out of another way of funding, but I think putting in a community grant, which competes, there's two different issues sitting here, and we need to put this one back out on the table in another way and pay for it rather than putting it through the community grants, and I'll just leave it at that for the budget time next year.
Okay. All right. Call the roll.
This is on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Harris?
No.
Zingy?
No.
Severson?
No.
Kifer?
No.
Gage?
No.
Isom?
No.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven nothing. That takes us down to 7B1, KPU, ordinance number 1685, increasing electric rates, first reading. Go ahead.
Your Honor, I move the city council approved first reading ordinance number 16-1805, increasing electric rates, establishing a date for public hearing, providing for an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Okay, Jay?
It's all coming, I mean, I don't know how to say it more officially than everything costs, everything costs. You got to raise prices a bit, sorry, and just to remind the public, in spite of the rumors, we do not have a room full of cash that all of us council members and the mayor go into at the end of our meeting, get naked, and throw up in the air. We don't have stuff like that.
We don't get naked.
Okay, well, thank you for squaring that, Dan.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Since it's out of order, then neither do I. And those guys out there don't either.
Okay, the rate would change from 9.50 to 10, $10.06, okay, per kilowatt hour. Correct that one?
Yes.
Okay, call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to 7B2, ordinance 161806, increasing water rates, first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approved first reading, ordinance number 16-1806, increasing water rates, establishing a date for a public hearing, providing for an effective date.
Second.
Moved in second. Anybody have anything to add? Bob?
I'm going to go back to the fact that there's still a lot of work to be done on this rate structure, and one of them, of course, is, as we've talked before about the clubs and stuff like that, and as you go down through this rate structure, there's an item that talks about clubs with kitchens. And I'm not sure if that's related to the fact that because they have a kitchen, they assume they have a restaurant business, and that's why the rate doubled, the base rate. But there are places that have kitchens that don't have restaurants. They have kitchens for events, and so I think those are still things that need to be worked on to be more equitable to the user. I'm a member of the lodge across the street, and we've had an activated meter on that place and starting to read it and working with the water department to see what the actual uses is, and it's probably not much more than a large family would use in a month, and yet they're paying an enormous amount for this type of stuff. And when you look at the rate structure that we have, a lot of it, I think, could be more equitable if we went to an overall meter rate, and I think they were moving in that direction. We're going to start with the larger customer and go to commercial businesses, and at some point, hopefully, get into residential rate structure. Most communities in Southeast are already there. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody else? Dick?
And then Dave. And maybe it's a comment along the similar line, and maybe going to meter rates on businesses to work, but I know there's some inequities or whatever going on in town, and one of them, I'll just be very brief on this, I've been approached by, and maybe we'll fix it when we go to meters, but maybe not, but a building with four units in, it's got water to it, but only, but it's got four or five electric meters on it, so they're paying a water bill, they're paying a sewer bill, and five of the, four of those units in there don't even have water. Only one's got water with a toilet, but those people are being charged. And so I'll get this to the manager, and I know that they've talked to the water department and all that good stuff, but somehow or other, we've got to change our regulations to where we're fair with people. Part of it may work out when we revisit with meters, because then if it's not using water, it's not using water. But anyway, it's something, we've got to get on top of the metered thing, and we've got to get it there sooner than later.
I like the meh, that's kind of a cool side play, I mean, yeah, this is not, this, this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone, I mean, the, the reality is, the, that division has been not paying its own way for, and we need to basically adjust that and figure, figure out a way so that we are accurately monitoring water use and making sure that the, that it's, it's not a drain on, on finances, because right now it is.
Anybody else? All the world.
Zingy?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven, nothing. That brings us down to vouchers, Ketchikan Daily News, five thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Your Honor, I move for approval of vouchers, the Ketchikan Daily News, and the amount of five thousand one hundred thirty-one point two five.
Move in second, and call the roll, please.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
And that passes, I mean, actually, that brings us down to managers' report. Carl?
Just a few, Mr. Mayor, um, for those of you who didn't attend the Chamber Annual Awards banquet Saturday, I'd just like the council to know that Kelly Johnson, our office manager at the library, received the Youth Leadership Award for her work with the Teen Advisory Group. That's something that's not in Kelly's job description, she does that all on her own time. My understanding is it's one of the longest continuous teen advisory groups in the state, so I just want to congratulate Kelly on that. We do have two memos on the managers' report this evening, Mr. Mayor, one is in response to Councilmember Coos's request for a review of port staffing within Alaska, and we'll take direction from the council as you determine appropriate. And we indicated that we are finalizing the cruise ship schedule for, for next, or for this year, two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, Carl, I had that question, I, I never got a chance to get back to everybody I needed to, so I was wondering if, um, if anybody had no objection to put that, I hate to say it, on the next meeting, so I can get back to people I told I promised I'd come talk to before we finalize it. Anybody have an objection?
Mr. Mayor, you know, if you want to come back and review it, we can do that, but we literally are just about out of time, we've got to get this finalized, so people...
I understand, I just want to make sure I get back to people that I promised I'd talk to.
You can go talk to them and tell them we approved it.
And, and I can do that, and, um, and just so we're still open to discussion, that's all I want to finish up. Um, I hate to just do this and, because I've just been busy and say, sorry, goodbye. Um, I'd like to finish after talking to some people, go back down, so, that's where I stand, I guess.
Uh, the last thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is, uh, we have a request for a special meeting sometime between the second meeting in February and the first meeting in March during budget deliberations. We discussed expanding the responsibilities of the Public Works Department in terms of taking on more, uh, construction activities. We're in the process of putting that report together now, but if the council could start thinking about dates or give us a date for that meeting, that would be helpful, and that's all I've got.
I'll start trying to come up with a date. Bob, do you have something?
Yeah, um, looking at the, the appropriate reserve tables, uh, item five twenty is Ketchikan Public Utilities. Does that incorporate the telephone, electric, and water reserves? Is there a way to split those out, Bob? There isn't? There...
If you combine utilities, our way to that meeting.
Okay. Yep, yep, that was just one of the questions in regards to what we had in those areas. And, um, the other one I had, as I read through the, uh, the minutes of the, of the hospital expansion project, uh, there were some notable items in there, and, um, I see that we're still looking at a, a projected completion date in April, and I just wanted to find out how firm that, that may be, um, and how, and that may be extended out to early May, as it says, so I just wondered how that was doing. And then, um, under item five, it says Peace House is fully tapped after FFNE budget for the project, uh, and the executive team will continue to be made aware of new issues and appropriate fund, uh, discussion may be made, and I just wonder how that might affect things as we move forward. Just, I guess, more, a little bit of a report on, um, where we at to date and time and, and I guess, budget.
I can get that report prepared and have it for you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Dick?
Yeah, I just, I guess, kind of a comment on the reserves, and I, I know we've got two new council members. Could we have Bob give us once again a list of what each of those reserve items mean and what we can use them for? Because I think some of them we could play with, some of them we can't. But I, I, I'm gonna assume a couple of people don't probably, they're just reserves, and I've had some people in the public say, well, you've got thirty-three million, thirty-eight million dollars, and, uh, but they don't understand that part of it is fixed, and some of it we can, we could play with.
We can get you that report, that's...
And so just, uh, the, the people, if so, they've got a hard copy of it, it's okay.
We can play with three point six million.
No, we got more than that, we've probably got ten if we wanted.
Well, yeah, we want to do that. General Hospital.
Or more.
All right, anybody else? All right, that brings us down, city clerks file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorneys file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items?
Yeah, Your Honor.
Yes.
Uh, I guess in talking to some folks, why, there's still some concern about, I guess, the sewer, status of the sewer and water lines underneath Tongas from the tunnel to Ketchikan, and we've talked about whether or not we can afford to replace them when the highway department replaces the whole thing, and so it would be good, I think, to have an agenda item where we got an update on maybe where the highway department is on the replacement of it, and maybe where our reserves are and what the status, what condition of those pipes, because I know we've done some, some looking at them, and just have a discussion, do we want to try to pursue actually replace them, or are we gonna do what we said we'd do and fix them as they break? So anyway, I think it needs to be a discussion item.
So be it. I like saying that.
Mr. Mayor, that will probably not be forthcoming until the first meeting in March, so...
Thank you. Okay, mayor and council comments. KJ?
Um, on the marijuana stuff, baby steps. I understand baby steps, it's at least a step in the direction, and I want to commend people on this council for always thinking about and maybe rethinking their ideas and rethinking them again and being willing to make decisions instead of just, that's the way I feel, and I ain't gonna say that. That's all.
Dave?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Bob?
Um, first of all, thanks Lou for the State of the Mayor or State of the City's address, that was very, very well done. I'd like to compliment the, uh, the chamber, the, uh, event, and, uh, the fact that the city received the Coast Guard designation was, uh, well done, and I thank you for that. And, uh, there was a lot of, uh, people that were recognized for the services that they did in this community through their business efforts, and that was nice to see. Thank you.
Julie?
Just a comment about the BRE program, the Business Retention and Expansion Program, I didn't talk about it today because we really don't have anyone to champion it, so the reason why it's kind of dying is because we don't have enough volunteers, we need a person in four different agencies to champion it, and then one agency to administer the program, and everyone's volunteering, so we just don't have the volunteer force right now. That's why I told, uh, the city manager not to put it on the agenda. Thanks. That's it.
General Lee?
Nothing today.
Judy?
Nothing.
Dick?
So...
All right, comes back to me. Bob, um, thank you for covering the chamber banquet, um, I saw some pictures of you, everybody told me you did a fantastic job in the presentation, and I thank you very much. Um, I thanked Julie in the chamber for letting me do the speech, I was a little worried, nobody had called me, so I thought maybe people were tired of me.
And then I'd just show up and say...
Yeah, so that was, well, I enjoy doing that. Um, that brings us down to, um, other new business, which we don't have, executive session, are we still doing that first one, the KPU one, evaluation? Ms. Smith, your wife?
That's a council discretion.
Let's do the negotiating one first, and go back to that one. So let's have a motion for, um...
Protect what resets.
You bet. Well, let's make the motion and then take the recess. On, uh, executive session, collective bargaining between the city of Ketchikan, KPU, and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local fifteen forty-seven.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to get a consistent with the General Manager's memorandum dated January fifteenth, two sixteen, as in best interest of the city, discuss negotiations regarding collective bargaining agreements between the city of Ketchikan DVA, Ketchikan Public Utilities, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local fifteen forty-seven, an executive session, in accordance with the findings, the city council go into the executive session, associated with the KMC two point zero four point zero two five A one and B two and AS four four point six two point three one zero C one and three, and discuss negotiation, and the auxiliary items described in the General Manager's memorandum dated January fifteenth, two fifteen, which matters include the need to discuss subject anomalies of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor settlement.